I'd like to call our work session to order. For today, first item we have on the agenda, we'd like to get a motion for us to approve the personnel docket that we received, have a motion to that effect. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the personnel docket? Hearing none. Ms. Banks, you call the roll, please.
Thank you. Ms. Bassin? Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we're going to, you know, we started really some time ago, really a year ago, we looked at and began talking about our board goals. As Dr. Boone came in in December, we had some more conversations around the goals and outcomes and indicators. We've talked about along the way, trying to make sure that we have some type of accountability system. We've described our own board norms and ethics and appropriate processes, and part of that has centered around the importance of the board, you know, key work of school boards, dealing with policy, key works of school boards, dealing with setting vision, and then of course, key works with school boards with accountability. So back in February and March, we looked at some key performance indicators that we tied to our board goals that we were looking at, as well as our existing board priorities. Then at the last work session, well, actually it was a workshop prior to our business meeting, Ms. Bassin and I began to walk through and talk through with the board around some accountability work that we had taken on at the board's acceptance, working with Dr. Bailey and her team. And so we began to discuss some of those areas of focus. Again, the really, the real piece of this entire accountability plan at this stage is about, you know, what's the board willing to take on? What type of indicators and expectations do we have? How do we hold ourselves accountable as a board and as the board's role in making sure that we are not only a peak performing school board, but that the work of the board and our policy, our expectations, our governance, is really supporting academic achievement and all the other issues, facilities, operations that are out there that then support academic achievement. But at the last meeting, we began to walk through, we got feedback and some questions from the board. We said we would come back at this work session and continue that process, both in terms of integrating some of the feedback that we heard from the board, as well as continuing to build out a couple of areas that we had not built out for the last meeting. So what I'm just gonna ask, if the, you know, folks will kind of relax and really will have a through work session in terms of us kind of going through, talking through it page by page. We have Dr. Boone with us to provide us with guidance and support. We also have Dr. Bailey and her team to also do that as well. Well, I get straight with some technology. I'm going to ask Ms. Bassin if she will go ahead and get us started, anything else that she would like to add from the work that we've been doing with the administration and as a team.
Well, as Mr. Jordan mentioned, you know, we've established, you know, some board goals and came up with three main areas for us to review, which we'll go over as we just talked about step by step. But those three goals are improved student achievement and outcomes, safe and secure 21st century learning environments, and community and parent engagement. First, if you go down to page three, you will see that under School Board Goal One, and these aren't in any real order of importance, but we have focus areas. And those focus areas are fully accredited schools, on-time graduation rate, and other academic indicators, SOL achievement and opportunity gaps, and attract and retain highly qualified and effective staff. So, under the first focused area, we have the identified needs, and you all have seen these from last time, the last meeting when we discussed these, which are centered around our, you know, our test scores, and looking at those among the different subgroups that we've already discussed that we want to look at per our goals and indicators that we established in February, March. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to add to the area of the number of fully accredited schools in terms of our board level accountability needs?
Well?
Could we add, under the increase of percent passing for subgroups, military, active military students, because isn't that required or future requirement under SSS?
That's true, yep.
So I think we need to add that as a subgroup?
That is a group that we're monitoring at the state level also, right?
Right.
So on, so on?
The bullet four, under identified needs?
Yes, I got that noted.
Oh, is it additional?
Yeah, it's under the fourth bullet on page four.
Add military.
Add military, okay. Subgroup.
Ask, where are we accounting for the new high school curriculum that's gonna be implemented
We are not in this because it hasn't been fully developed. The board has some concept of what a graduate, Virginia graduate would look like.
Right.
Out for comment, but we've not been given any guidance and direction as to what the high school program of studies will change. So it's not reflected here at all.
What's the timeframe of that from the board level at the state level?
They anticipate some type of action on the profile of the Virginia high school graduate, maybe in September.
There was?
Place next year?
That's my thinking, yeah.
Oh, it would?
Yeah, there was a public hearing that they held in Williamsburg the same day we attended the VSB Conference on Education. I actually stopped through there on the way back, and so they were still at that point going around the Commonwealth, hearing from the public. And I know they've said that they want to pace themselves and roll it out and make sure that there's plenty of opportunity for input. So what we're intended to do here is, you know, do this piece now. You'll see, we talk about quarterly and maybe semi-annual review. So if we do find that it's something that we need to add come January, we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
I believe there are two more hearings that are set, well, I think one in Abingdon and one in Lynchburg, if I'm not mistaken, in the next few weeks. So if anyone happens to be in the area, I think.
Dr. Gabriel, did you have some feedback?
On the document, that is the newer document, everything that's highlighted in yellow has been added?
Has been added, yeah, yeah.
And then I just wanted to toss this idea out under, it might go under board level indicators, if I, we're addressing issues on this page right now?
Right, we're just doing that first.
So I wanted to throw out others' thoughts on a report that would focus on how funding is being allocated towards each of these measures. So I wrote down the funds that go directly to the students, the funds that are going directly to the teachers, the funds that are going directly to support staff in the building, and then, I don't know if it would be too busy if we were to talk about, you know, operational funds, title funds, SIG funds, but just to see how our funding streams are working towards improving or working at these measures.
So one of the things that we dealt with, and we'll probably, Dr. Bailey may want to pull a chair up, but, you know, if you recall, when we were looking at the key performance indicators before, they are a lot more than what we have here. So, you know, working with, you know, Dr. Bailey and Mr. Footy, they kept trying successfully, I think, keeping, keep reminding us that we could indicator ourselves to death. And so what you'll see later on, as we go through, there are some items that focus on budget. We tried to make preparation for the fact that the Equity Task Force would be out there doing some things. And so what we wanted to try to do is make sure we were being bold enough in trying to make sure that we were pushing forward, but not be so deep so soon that we would never get anything done. So I'm not sure how to, how we would reflect what I think I hear you saying in terms of tying the?
Well, we've talked about having a program analysis. We, Dr. Boone is gonna be-
About that in here, too, yeah.
Dr. Boone has talked about zero-based budgeting. So if there's a way that if we are moving forward with this plan and kind of incorporate how the funds are directly impacting student achievement, if we can work it in so that it's one succinct report versus a separate report, then I think that that might be something that will help us and others understand how we fund certain things, why we have monies for certain items, and if we need to add or shift funds for other items. And I have one other comment, but if there were other thoughts on this topic, then-
Could I address that comment? I think that's a, that's a great point, and that is, one of our main roles is the budget decision-making process. So to tie that in, you know, on a macro level, when we, for our board level indicators of when we are requesting reports and our strategies of when, you know, what reports we want under board level indicator, and then when we want them, I think is really important as we enter the budget discussions, so that we, you know, can make sure that whatever our needs are and how we need to meet those needs, we have that information before we enter those budget discussions. So I think that, you know, at the board level, I think that's what we need to be paying attention, that we need to pay attention to. So I think that's a great point, and something that we've, you know, discussed and noted as we've kind of flushed out some of the indicators and the strategies of when they would be addressed.
So then our action is, we are making a note of it and figuring out how to address it, or we're just saying we think it's part of the timing of the report, trying to make sure that we are intentional of trying to tie our budget discussion to our academic outcomes?
One of the things I was, a note I was making, is that as we do look at, look at the various board reports around progress of schools, that we include in those, what are the investments that have been made relative to certain things that we align with that school? Because, you know, I talk a lot about aligning resources to what you want to have happen. And so we can be intentional in including fiscal information, you know, what are the investments, what are the things that we've put in place, and, you know, how are we assessing their effectiveness? It could be anything from class size, additional resources, it could be, yeah, graduation coach, whatever it is, what do we have in place and do we, what that looks like? And so that's what I was thinking.
Yes, some additional?
One other topic, and we have discussed this before, and I know that Mrs. Doyle has brought this up, but under related professional development, if we can work together with maybe our city council parts to proactively either get professional development or work on providing what our legislative agenda is going to be, so that we can either look at the legislation that we have or bring forth new legislation that will help us look at the funding streams, or some of the regulations to assist us in board level decision-making. I think that might be something that we should try to put a little bit more emphasis on and maybe work a little bit harder on.
We're gonna talk about that some more as we enter one of the other goals of community and parent engagement, our engagement with our city officials. So I think-
But even the state?
Well, the state, yes. It's the national state and local officials that we'll address in that particular section when we get to it.
Anything else, any additional thoughts on that piece? Dr. Boone, anything? Let me, let me say this, as we, as we go through this, you know, one of the things that, we're doing this for a reason. We want to encourage as much engagement and participation as possible, and try to avoid going down and eventually getting to the point where we have sign-off, and then try to come back later and redo it. So a lot of folks have asked, you know, why are we spending this time? We just think this is critical, and it really helps us as a board to make sure we're all on the same page, and so that we can then provide that framework to, to the superintendent. So as we ask for updates on operational things, or as we address other items that she may be bringing forward, we're clear as a board and as a governance team, you know, what our role is and what measures and expectations that we have, and try to avoid, you know, individual, figure that out, that we are really trying to make sure that this is a team-opted effort. This is not Mr. Bassin and Mr. Jordan's effort, this is the board's effort. And that doesn't mean you can't provide input at any point in time, but I just want to make sure that we're clear, we're gonna try to drive through adoption of this based upon the feedback and expectations we've, we've heard as a, and discussed as a board.
I have one additional thought here that isn't included here, and I wanted to get everybody's input on it before I added it. And having said that, I should also explain that most of what is, almost all of what is in here has been discussed already among this, you know, among us collectively. But one additional thought that, I don't know if it's here, or if it does fall in the community and parent engagement, but it's tied to this piece, is our reporting to the community about our SOL scores and how we're doing academically, and how and where do we do that? Because we know that right now, we, you know, I know there used to be a dashboard, I believe, but I don't know if establishing and creating that and is something that-
If I can, and Dr. Bailey's here, too, to add to it, but that's our goal, is to get back to that very public dashboard of indicators. And one of the things we'll be able to do is create a dashboard based on what the board has in place, and then we can build out the district from that. So that's our thinking in how we operationalize that, that full public link to what's there, not just what the state has, but what are the things that this board and the district are paying attention to, and what's our progress and trends in those?
Right. You may recall, when we were looking at the accountability flow chart, at least when we were pulling this from some things that the district used to do.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah.
There was, there was, this was, there's a full comprehensive report that was given. And in that report, you had, you know, not only these types of indicators, but what the division was doing, what schools were doing. So as we've talked about this, I think we're trying to evolve back to the point, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Where at the end of the year, or at some period in time, the superintendent would be given a full annual report of the work of the division. And in that report, you have the board's piece, how we've performed, and any other indicators beyond that that we talked about earlier, as far as that full set of key performance indicators and other points. So clearly, making sure that we have an annual report, whether it's how it's presented, whether it's dashboards, whether it's documents, whether it's some of the work that we've done in the past with the Education Foundation, you know, is key, because ultimately, we want to make sure the public is engaged and feels ownership in what we're doing.
Right. And I know that that's something that we're working toward, but to have it reflected in here is, is what I wanted to point out. We can-
I don't see any objection to putting anything in there about an annual, annual report or period, you know?
State of the school?
State of the, whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah. Given that it's a requirement, we certainly would have to do it.
Yes.
Well, but do it at this level.
Yeah, at this level, right. Okay, so are there any more questions on this, this particular goal and focus area of schools fully accredited?
Okay, so may I ask a question about page five?
We're gonna finish page four going across first.
Yeah.
Yes, so I did have another one.
And we're, and so, you know, we don't have anything under the benchmark and standards, because we are gonna work with Dr. Bailey and Dr. Boone, and kind of work toward what those benchmarks should be, based on baseline data. So that is to be determined in the future. Do you have something else to add, Dr. Gabriel?
Yeah, I, on the, on the very end column, where we have increased the number of students going to college, I, I'm fine with that as one of our, let me see, that's on the, I think you went to the head.
We're still, yeah, we're still on four.
Sorry, we went back to four. As a, as a benchmark, but-
Yours is yours.
At the, yeah, I made all my, sorry, I made my notes on this one.
And the percent of fully accredited schools, overall high school MSEs.
All right, never mind. I'll save it for page six or something.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Good, all right. So then let's move on for now to the next focus area of on-time graduation rate and other academic indicators.
So one question, under on-time graduation, would we add, where is the GCI?
Dr. Boone?
The graduation completion index?
Correct.
I believe that that's included when we look at the, the percent of students graduating on time. I'm looking at Dr. Bailey, yes, that's, that's part of that report.
We, graduation, we- Generally add, we have three graduation measures that we look at that are a part of the accountability systems. There's the Virginia on-time, there's the four-year graduation completion index, where you have four, five, and six years, and you also have the federal graduation indicator, which is four, five, and six as well. And so I believe with SSS and the new look of looking at what, what a graduate is, some of those measures may change. So, but yes, it would fall under percent of students graduating on time, and we would have the three rates there, certainly identifying what the differences are.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Does anyone else have anything to add? Or suggestions to remove that you don't feel is a board level indicator or board level need?
If I can just make a comment, following what Dr. Bailey was saying, you know, as we look at the, the new Virginia profile of a graduate and whatever else, next year this time, we may be talking about adjustments to what we're monitoring. Doesn't mean, though, that we have to stop monitoring what's important to us. We would want to align and enhance because there's a data set that we're focused on as a district, and so that can be outside of the state and federal accountability standards, what is around, what do we want to focus on?
And I just wanted to note, because if you look at the last bullet under on-time graduation, dealing with students with disabilities and graduating with diplomas, standard in advance, we wanted to make sure, you know, we heard clearly from the board, that we wanted to make sure we were monitoring that. Also, as we've talked about, actually, Dr. Gabriel kind of mentioned a moment ago, in terms of looking at CT and careers, as well as other diploma seals or diplomas. And then under the other academic indicators, the conversation that we've had around AP, ACT, SAT, and trying to make sure we were constantly monitoring and pushing the envelope on all students. And so we tried to make sure that we captured all that we had heard, but if, you know, if you all just take another look just to make sure if there's anything that you think we may have missed in that, please let us know, and you can let us know later. But we did consciously try to make sure that we included those things.
I'm glad to see dual enrollment in there, because again, AP is one standard for college readiness, dual enrollment is another, and something that we have all the higher-ed assets right here in this city, and how do we leverage them for our student success. I'm so glad that that has, has stayed on the list. And again, you know, at next year this time, we'll be figuring all of this out, given, because we know internships and externships and those things may be part of that high school profile versus the traditional Carnegie unit piece, so.
A question in relationship to the dual enrollment and the, and the AP. And this is, this is an issue that came up maybe three, four years ago in terms of how they weigh those, when they're selecting the valedictorian, salutatorium in line. And the question was, when a child took a course, dual enrollment, that it was not weighted on the same level or weighted kind of below a child that was taking advanced placement. So how do we do that? Or it just didn't seem fair?
I think, and I don't know if the district has changed those weights, but that's been over time, that even Ana's courses had a weight. So everything has a differentiated weight. And I remember years ago, having the conversation, debate about advanced placement versus dual enrollment, and why wouldn't they carry the same weight? That's something that, you know, Dr. Rogers is here, and Mr. Coleman and Dr. Cataldo, we'll certainly look and see what those are, and maybe talk with the board about that later. But there is a weighting that's, that's given to it. I remember conversations at one point because there's the exam pieces associated, and so are you weighting based on the exam score in the AP course? Are you weighting based on the, the course, having taken the course? And so it's about taking the course. So we can look into that and then perhaps have a discussion with the board some point in the future, what that looks like.
But on that, you, as you spoke to that, I don't know if we captured it, or even if we need to do at this point, but at the graduations, when we talk about the amount of scholarships and merit scholars and so forth, you know, is that something that maybe we would want to look at and see if there's something from a, I don't know if there is something necessarily from a board perspective we can do in that regard, but I think as far as having progress reports in terms of how our students are doing, and are there some things that maybe we should be discussing in terms of our policies and expectations around, around that, that end of it? So how you all feel about that?
I totally agree with that.
I agree that we can add that. Dr. Boone and Dr. Bailey, do you have any additional thoughts about that particular piece, or?
Yeah, or if nothing else, if we know that the total division amount was so much per graduate than last year, and then we just look at, are we going up? Are we about the same? So even if it's just at that, that high level, it seems to be something we ought to be able to consider.
I think that'd be great. Before we move on, I have two, two additional thoughts, and these are things that we already required to do, but in, in effort to keep this as comprehensive as possible, is just to make sure that our reporting of the special ed plan and the gifted education plan are also included in this piece.
Well?
And I'm not sure, I don't know if it goes here, or if it goes, just, just in terms of our monitoring, which we already do, but-
And so I don't necessarily see that as an accountability plan piece. That's something that we have to do.
Right.
I think it's important to see, based on the data that we will provide the board around the performance of our gifted students, or the achievement of our students with disabilities, that's where we engage in those conversations as we review those plans for acceptance and forwarding for funding, that that's the appropriate place to monitor that. To put that there, then, are you gonna monitor the Perkins grant? Are you gonna monitor the Title I grant?
Okay. Okay.
And so to that point about how we using our resources to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck in, in, in the subgroup areas, I think the best way to deal with that is when we report out with the students. But know then, you will be informed about overall student achievement in a way that you can have even extended conversations and discussions when those grants, grant applications are presented to the board for approval.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good. Okay. All right. So moving on to the.
Is it another? Was it just the one? Or did, I thought you said you had two?
Well, yeah, I, I put them together, the special ed plan and the gifted ed plan. All right, so our next focus, focus area is the SOL achievement.
Before we leave, just to just go on across the chart again. So we see that we have the, looking at the performance reports, what we're monitoring, the strategies that we've outlined. So I just wanna make sure we've gone across as well, and if there's anything in particular, timing wise, or some type of report that you think we may have missed, just wanna make sure that we don't forget about that. It's easy to get caught up in the identified needs and to get lost in the strategy work that the board is supposed to be undertaking.
All right, so if there are no other additions there for now, let's move on to the next focus area of SOL achievement and opportunity gaps. Some of the gaps that we've talked about already.
And to that earlier one, if you add military under the subgroups.
Already noted, yes. Got it.
One question if I may. Under student options and opportunities under the first column, decrease the percent of students absent 10 or more days. What's the trigger on the 10?
That's, I think that's the definition, and Dr. Bailey can correct me if I'm wrong. Is that, 10 plus is chronic absenteeism, is that right?
Yes, it's, it's a measure that we used to look at, and what we had done in the past, we changed it to look at 10% of the number of days, because if you come into the, or enroll in the district in the middle of the year, you'll have a shorter number of days. And so we felt it would be a better measure if you looked at 10%. And so we would actually change that particular.
Okay, okay. So versus 10 days, it'd be 10% of your.
School year, which is more days. It doesn't mean we aren't paying attention to what happens, because if you are missing 10 days or more, that is in the definition of chronic absenteeism is, is more than 10 days. And that's, that's in the national definition of that. And so it, it's important that, because 10% could actually represent 18 days. So we've increased the number of days that we're seeing we're concerned about, but we're focusing on the fewer number of days as being an indicator of a child at risk for academic failure due to attendance.
Just for the minutes and records purpose, so you're recommending that it read how?
Mr. Puddy, you wanna join me? Because we had a discussion about this.
Aren't you glad I asked?
But aren't you glad to see we have these types of conversations, so we, we gathered to talk about what we.
I did wanna know.
Originally, when we did the KPIs years ago, if you remember, Rodney, we did use 10 days as the threshold for the announcement. For those of you that have been around a while, John Aloysius. And whole, he did some analysis and looked at it and said, really, that we probably should be looking at 10%. So we changed it to 10%, but it could be whatever cutoff he, that you wanted.
But it's, but it's decreased the percent of student.
Right.
I'm just saying that.
Right, so whatever the threshold that you wanna set, whether it's 10%, 10 days, 15 days, five days, then it's really, the, the wording should be decrease the number of students that fall into that category of having too many absences to.
So, so the wording would be decrease the number or percent of students absent 10% of more than a school year?
We use 10% to reflect as, Dr. Boone, that students do come into the, into the school year at, at different times, or they leave, and 10 days for a student that should have been here 50 days is, is probably equivalent to missing 18 or 20 days for a student that should have been here the entire year. So the percentage then allows you to take a look at students that are not necessarily here for the entire year, or using some percentage. And it could be 8% if you would feel more comfortable with a little bit.
No, I was debating the.
So the answer to your question.
No, I think at this point, he's looking at the wording.
I just wanna make sure we leave here, we've captured it correctly.
Decrease the number and percentage of students that fall into the category. How are we to find it of having too many absences?
You got it right.
I got it.
Okay, all right, okay.
I got it.
Dr. Gabriel?
Under also the student options and opportunities, increase the percent of students attending four-year or two-year university or college. I think that's a, a great goal, but in light of all of the discussion that we've had about career readiness and military, you think it might be better if we were to say, increase the percentage of students prepared to attend a four-year or two-year college? Because really, we're not just trying to pipeline kids into a university if they're not really ready, and.
Or if the job, the career that they're focusing on doesn't require that. We know that the majority of the future jobs, current and future jobs, will require more than a high school diploma, but less than four years of college. So I agree. I think we need to figure out what's the other indicator we do in there in terms of where we are. We aren't gonna be able yet to define prepared for college or whatever, or, or two- or four-year college or careers, be, because the ways in which we measure that is not what we're doing now as a state. It's, you know, we look at test scores, and that's why the state is looking at the whole profile of a graduate, because higher education and, and careers, employers have said, you got great test takers, but we don't necessarily have students that are ready for life. And so I was thinking in, in that one, to, to your point, increase the percent of students attending a four- or two-year college or university, or other post-secondary educational or, or training program, because that would get us to, what are the careers that don't necessarily require that four years of college? But we know our students, I think what makes this particular need important is the fact that the jobs that our students will be graduating and seeking will require more than high school. So if we don't push on how many students are getting into those opportunities, two, four years, or other post-secondary, then we've done a good job and wiped our hands, and that's not gonna be enough. We have to have students who are ready to go into those options, and military could be part of that. But, but again, the idea is, do they have a plan after they leave that would allow them to get into a successful career field?
Right.
Well, somewhere I, I thought we had, and maybe that's also what we need to add, was the industry certifications and.
And we do, it's in there, it's in the second bullet, and then we have some of the other items in, on page four.
I was gonna say, but the second bullet just talks about the type of diploma option. Having the seals of the certificates, again, we're trying to get them into pathways. So I like that. We do want to have, and see, I would say rather than seals, seals, if you're gonna talk about diploma seals, then that needs to go up where we talk about standard or advanced studies diplomas and the type of seals. I think here, increase the number of students who graduate with industry certifications.
Right, that's what I was.
Or complete those shortly thereafter. We know some have age limitations. You have to be at least 18 to take the certification exam. But I think that's the, the real indicator of whether or not they are, they are life-ready after they leave us.
But perhaps under the page before, where it said, under other academic indicators, increase the number of students who have workforce readiness skills, we need to blend that with what you just said, Dr. Boone.
Right.
Because I think life-ready actually incorporates a lot of those special ed students also.
Well, they, they're included in everything, because our students with disabilities can go on in access to, to year colleges, four-year colleges, and those post-secondary training.
But, but the employability piece is also very important with those that, that do graduate with the special seals, but can still be employable.
And, and honestly, I was thinking moving this whole section under here, under student options, along with the others, because, you know, I was trying, I was struggling with this opportunity gap, which to me is really disparity in access to resources. And these don't, you know, they're, they're tied more toward our academic, our other academic outcomes or indicators versus being in this particular spot. So if that is agreeable.
Right, but part of the reason that we did that, because remember, we talked about, in some of these cases, we may duplicate them.
Yeah.
When we were looking at the opportunity gaps, and you go over and look at the benchmark and standards, we were really trying to make sure that not only were we addressing these indicators overall, but that we were looking at them in terms of any equity disparities, gaps, opportunities, you know, making sure that students were being encouraged and availing all options. And so that was one of the reasons why we put it there, to try to remind us to not just look at it overall, but to look at it specifically as it began to address, you know, gaps around economics, gaps around gender, gaps around race, and so forth.
Right, right. And I, I just think a couple of those items are, are not in that other spot as well, so that's.
And those are opportunity gaps. It gets to that conversation of all of our students.
Yeah.
But we are clear that we're saying we want to make sure we add the industry certification in that piece into.
And post-secondary.
Post-secondary.
Training opportunities as far as the pathway.
Made note of that, yep. And then you'll see in the next column, you know, for board level indicator, to get to Mr. Jordan's point of, you know, of using the monitoring and reviewing the Equity Task Force recommendations as they develop, also will help us determine what our needs are in, in all of those areas.
And on that equity point, we were trying to be balanced in that, we didn't prescribe everything before folks had an opportunity to go and look at all the things that they were going to do from the Equity Task Force standpoint. So we were intentional in trying to make sure that we noted that there was gonna be some monitoring that would be done, but we didn't wanna get so far ahead that, that when the task force got formed, that somehow it felt like we were prescribing their work before they had an opportunity to go off and do their, do their own assessment.
And if I can, I don't want to, to ignore Ms. Gosian over here, if I've used, have I used the right language around industry certifications and post-secondary? Or is it, right, because I mean, here, here's the person that lives this on a daily basis, so I wanna make sure we're putting the right things in there.
Okay.
And on that note, if there's something that you think is missing, you know, you can always email us and let us know, and we'll make sure it gets, gets appropriately added.
For sure. Other thoughts on this area?
Want to talk about the, just some of the benchmark standards that, that we added?
Okay.
Last column.
Yeah, the last column. So, you know, based on our conversation around the indicators that we had a few months ago, these were the, the gap groups that we, we talked about at that time. I added the, the male and female gap group because, if I recall correctly years ago, just seeing, I think it'd be interesting to see how our, our boys and girls are performing relative to each other as well, and wanted to get your thought about that.
Certainly, in the beginning, we'll provide that particular statistic. In the past, we found that there wasn't much of a gap. I think sometimes you may find in, at the higher end of, end of course, science, you might find a gap there, but moving, looking through all of the other subject areas that are tested, we didn't find anything significant to really kind of zero in on.
Okay.
From an opportunity standpoint, we also just wanted to make sure we didn't find that young ladies were not being steered away from STEM and other things, you know, and so that's what we were trying to make sure from a gender perspective.
Right.
We were at these, these areas as well.
Right.
And then, Ms. Basine, just remind me, the E D S, is that the?
Economically disadvantaged, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, wanna make sure we had the income piece in there.
So if you just take, take a minute to look at our strategies, which is, you know, aligning our agendas, calendars, so that we do get these reports in a manner that does help us around, you know, as we get ready to prepare the budget and, yeah, get ready to prepare for the budget. So if there's anything that you want us to be specific about timing, let us know that. Does anyone have any comments around that?
Six, right?
Yes. Going across the columns, yeah.
Opportunity gaps.
Of course, we would add our military with that one also.
Right, yeah, we're gonna, we'll.
Yeah, yeah, I, I added that note, yeah. The one thing I, the other thing, point, I'm just looking at my notes here.
Excuse me, if you all wanna bring a chair up, you could do that. You'd have to just stand there. So I don't want you to feel that you just have to, if you wanna come back and forth, you can do that, or you can pull up a chair. So whatever is comfortable for you, but I don't want you to feel like you just had to stand there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we'll stand for a while, see, see how that goes.
See if we collapse, you'll remember.
Okay. And I, I'm not sure, as we think about opportunity gaps, and I was contemplating what that really means and what we do as a board, one of the comments, or one of the notes that I had made was for us to determine how we evaluate the resources that are specifically tied to academic achievement, which goes partly to what Dr. Gabriel was saying earlier. But how we do that in terms of, you know, our, also our music and our arts programs and other areas, which we know, we know from previous data that you've shared with us, and what we know nationally from research, that some of our students don't have the same access to music and art programs outside of the school, but what do we do within the school?
And part of that goes back to the, what we would think the Equity Task Force would be looking at.
Right, right. So, but I think our board level would be, you know, looking at a report on how our resources are being allocated, which we already know based on our policy that's already in there, that that would be one, one area that we.
Is that under the SOL achievement gaps, that you would want that report to be discussing? Is that where you would, just trying to follow?
I think so. I'm, I'm asking the question. I'm, I'm raising the question to Dr. Boone and.
Well, again, I'll, I'll remind us of the identified needs. These are the, the core pieces that we're dealing with. It doesn't mean it represents, because something isn't there doesn't mean we aren't ignoring, we aren't giving it attention somewhere else.
Right.
And so it cautions us, if we start doing art, music, P E, then we have foreign language, we have, you know, and all of that.
Yeah, and I was just giving examples.
Right, no, but, but, but I'm saying, but as we look at that whole group, I think, again, it gets to that point of us making mental and, and actual notes, that as we think about pieces of the budget, and we think about the well-rounded student, the whole student, how do we ask the questions about the other pieces of the, the academic opportunities that are there? And so I think for, for the sake of the accountability plan, it doesn't mean we're ignoring it, but I just don't think we need to add it there, because then we could always, then we say, well, how many students are taking CTE courses? You know, and it, so we get to that whole plethora of opportunities. But I think it's one of those notes that we make as a governance team, that we wanna make sure and monitor what's happening with our programs, as well as access by students to these programs and opportunities.
I'm assuming also that we're, under the board level indicator, we're, we're talking about increasing number of reports on closing the achievement gap, that we'll have reports that incorporate initiatives, unique initiatives that are being done in schools, like our paired schools. Would that fall under that category?
So we, we, so we were thinking that when you get down to initiatives, that that's a level below us.
Okay.
So, yes, in terms of monitoring their impact, but we were concerned that if we started listing all the different initiatives, then we would be pulled into the operational piece and not the governance piece.
Okay, so then how do we go back and evaluate? That wouldn't be for us to evaluate, that would be for the superintendent to evaluate, is that what you're, to see if that change?
I, I think when we begin to look at school-based data to address the overall achievement of students, we'll get at that point. we'll get at that point.
Okay.
And we'll be able to have the very rich discussions about what's leading to success at a particular school or what are the barriers or the challenges to success happening at those schools? Is it a structural thing? Is it a resource piece? What is it, you know?
And somewhere in here, we talked about choice options and some other things. I think we'll touch on that. But something that Dr. Boone just said a moment ago, that I think we should consider adding under professional development, been working with Mrs. Banks to do the onboarding training for our student member. And in the manual that Mrs. Doyle and Mrs. Banks put together last year, there's a whole section there around, you know, questions to ask, around different items, finance questions, so on and so forth. So I think when Dr. Boone just mentioned knowing the right questions to ask, I think in our continuing professional development chart, that might be something that we want to continue to enhance our professional development on. So as we get these reports, we know how to do that, or do it better, or do it well, or are constantly reminded of that. Know we went through the training with, the data made me do it. But that was something that often comes out in all this board governance pieces, knowing the right questions to ask. And I would recommend that we add that specifically under our professional development column. There's no objection.
Else? Okay. Moving along to attracting and retaining highly qualified and effective staff. You'll recall at the last meeting when we discussed this, I accidentally had omitted this section, and these are the indicators that we had talked about back in February, March. So if you'll just take a look at that and let me know of any changes. Or Dr. Boone, Dr. Bailey, if you think there are other board level identified needs that we need to consider or remove or.
I'll just highlight, we often have the conversation around highly effective. We were, when we were working on our earlier draft, we deal with the highly qualified and, you know, Dr. Birdsong and Mr. Billups would always talk to us about highly qualified. But we were always kind of struggling a bit in terms of what does highly effective mean for us. And so in that identified needs area, we were trying to figure out or doing the work of what does it mean to be a highly effective school board member? And actually trying to find that, you know, qualified and quantified. And then for each level, so as we talked about putting this together, you know, we wanted to make sure that as a governance team, we were clear that, you know, we have a role and where the buck stops. But also that we were trying to make sure that each step of the way, we were identifying it. So as we review personnel dockets, as we talk about things, we're constantly reminded of what the definition means to us and not just, not just some checklist. The other thing you'll see under the strategy area and under the board level indicator, we have integrated the pay and comp study that we've talked about and tried to be intentional in terms of you go all the way over to the benchmark and standards, setting the expectation around December, just based upon what we've heard thus far. But also making sure that, you know, it's tying in with our budget discussion. And then I thought we had somewhere tied to that, we, now that we have the receive and pay comp recommendations, but also, Tanya, we had discussed the phasing in of it. Oh, I see.
Yes, yes, under strategies. So prepare to discuss the phase-in plan from an operational, financial perspective. So as you already said, you know, as we get ready to talk about the budget, I think we'll.
We also spoke with Mr. Billups, you see the newly contracted teachers. And the input and advice that he gave us around this is when we go through our budget discussion and we have this window of when we're preparing for the budget, but we have not adopted the budget, and we're out there trying to recruit folks, that we wanted to have this need or indicator that kind of drove our early commitments, that folks have said they want to be a part of our division. And once we adopt our budget, that we're able to go back and say, now we can move from the commitment to the contract. And so we changed that language from, I think it had a June 30th date in it before. But Mr. Billups helped to, helped us to put that language in and felt it was a good indicator from the human resources perspective for us to have for, as a board.
We want to monitor mentoring and support for newly hired teachers.
Yeah.
I don't know what would be the, yeah, I don't know how.
Reports from us, investment, resource alignment.
What the professional development look like, how that is being implemented? Because that's, again, we lose a lot of teachers for various reasons in the first couple of years. And we want to make sure that we're providing the utmost, utmost support for them to make sure that they're successful.
So you're recommending.
That's a great point. I had.
Under the needs area?
Well, I had, I also made note of that, but I had put it under the district climate for teachers.
Oh, okay, it's there. Because I was.
I mean, it's not in there. I had made a note myself. As I was going through it, I was thinking, oh, you know, we should add that, you know, because we've definitely, we've talked about it almost monthly about, you know, as we go.
Wherever it lands, I think that should be more of a strategy.
Yeah.
Well, a strategy or an indicator, that's what we want to pay attention to, that, you know, what are the support systems that we're putting in place? We talk about the highly effective, the getting folks on board, and then how do we support them going forward? So I think it's the strategy. And I don't know, is that, there's a last one. It doesn't have a bullet and it wasn't bold. So I wasn't sure, the overall teacher retention rate by years of experience. Do we put the conversations around teacher retention and the mentoring as part of that? You know, or do, as you said, do we put it up under new teachers, newly contracted teachers? And I think mentoring support for teachers as something that we're looking at? Or either it's between an indicator or a strategy. I'm looking at Karen and Dennis to see.
Well, it's just not for teachers, it's for.
Teachers and principals, yeah.
Right, exactly.
I personally think it should be an identified need.
As a need.
And as a strategy.
What's the follow-up strategy to it?
Exactly.
And that when we, when we review, that that is something that we put as a report of what is, have, because that's what we've been asking, you know.
Let's don't lose it then. So in terms of recommended language for need, Dr. Robinson, I've heard you say something. Dr. Boone, can you all help us to give us a language we can put there from a mentoring and support perspective from a need?
See, the need is the fact that we need to retain new teachers and have them become highly effective and new principals and have them become highly effective. That's really the need. And so then the mentoring, the monitoring, the mentoring support, the investments that we're making to make sure they're successful. That's why I said, that either becomes an indicator of how we are supporting and maintain, you know, and retaining folks, or either it's a strategy to retain. That's why I was looking at Karen and Dennis to see.
I think it should be a strategy, like you said, because it really is, you said it's to really retain and support those teachers.
The need is, to Dr. Robinson's point, the need is to retain employees and principals. And, you know.
And make sure that they're successful.
Successful. So that's the real need.
But as a board level, I think what we, what we get as a board level is a report on the mentoring program perhaps.
Right. And so I said, it can either become a board level indicator or.
Or a strategy. Yep, got it.
All right, so I'm still not clear, because I know, because Tanya, I had this same discussion. So we have in here, overall teacher retention rate by years. And we wanted to make sure that we were capturing the definition of highly effective. But then, Dr. Banath, I heard you say retain new and have them supported as they become. Successful and highly effective. So is that the, a need? And then you all were saying that there's a strategy towards achieving that?
Right. The need is that we need to keep people, you know, we've had the turnover. And we need to, those folks that we're investing in to be successful, we want to retain them. So the need is around the retention of new principals and teachers in the district. The, then, one of, the indicator, of course, is to monitor our overall retention rate of these individuals and their success, okay? Then the strategy becomes reporting out of the mentoring activities and other professional developments, professional development that's in place in order to make sure that we're retaining these folks.
I have one question mark behind new. And I say that because new and teachers that are transitioning into other areas.
Because new to the division is what we were using by the definition.
That's what I said. So to me, there, we're talking about two. Brand-new teachers to the district are one subset of the retention of teachers overall. And we have to support new teachers. We have to support teachers in general to become highly effective. And the same thing with principals. So that's why I say, I think the indicator deals with the retention of principals and teachers as they become highly effective and successful. And then we can drill down, just as we did, the various subgroups. Under that, then we have new teachers. We have those folks, you know how we look at the teacher's success rate? Zero to five years, six to 10 years. And so we can then begin to break out in those groups, who are we talking about? And that gets to the one about overall teacher retention by years of experience. And you bring that in as a subset of what we're looking at. And the same thing with principals. What do we know about new principals? What's our retention rate looking like for principals and all of that?
But I do recall when, because when Ms. Basine and I were talking about this, and it goes back to the whole highly effective piece. So we had discussions around two areas. So one was when somebody is new in terms of experience, then what kind of supports do you get to, you know, they may be brand-new and be highly effective on day one. But to the extent, to the extent that there's a movement along some continuum towards being highly effective, we wanted to make sure that we were investing in keeping and retaining those. And then to the extent that we had existing personnel who were already effective, make sure that we weren't losing those. And so I just don't know if we've.
Well, and here is the conundrum. How are we going to define, we have to define highly effective. And so then, how, excuse me, how do we apply the highly effective designation to people who are there? So that's another set of conversations around how do we translate evaluations into effectiveness? And so I'm thinking in this first iteration of the board's Accountability Plan, we take the piece about knowing who's with us, how long they stay with us, how they are supported to stay. And then we begin to talk about, in subsequent Accountability Plans, what are we doing around building out, and in this first plan, the definition of highly effective? And then how do we begin to identify metrics related to highly effective? Because we know we had, what was it, highly qualified was about having a degree and being licensed in the area you're teaching.
Right.
So if we're going to do highly qualified, highly effective, how are we going to say that? And then what's the relationship between that and the evaluation instrument and those ratings? Because you can't just say highly effective and ignore that other piece. So that's why I think we'd be taking, biting off more than we could actually even fathom to entertain this year. But I think what we need to do is do the monitoring about what, how successful are our efforts? Because we have things here about pay and comp and mentoring and support. How effective are we in retaining the people who are here? And as we build this definition of highly effective, so the first thing is, are we keeping the people that we have? Secondly, how are we supporting the people that are here, particularly our new teachers and new administrators? And are they staying with us? And then we get, in the next phase of this, begin to talk about how do you apply a highly effective designation to the people who are staying or leaving, or how do, first of all, how do we even define that someone is highly effective?
I just.
And that's why I say, I don't think we can do both in the same year.
But just on that note, you see that we've established this target of December 2016.
Yeah, you can for the pay and comp study, you exactly right.
No, no, for the definition.
I saw the pay and comp study one without my eyeglasses.
I'm not talking about the pay and comp.
That's a great target.
Now, I'm bringing it to the, I'm bringing it to the board's attention because part of what we've talked about as a board is trying, is trying to make sure that we put some dates around some things. But at the same time, we always say we want our things to be smart. So I'm just bringing it because if it's not realistic, I need you to tell us it's not realistic.
I think the full scope of what we're trying to do is not realistic. I've got to figure out.
Say that again?
I said the full scope of what we're trying to do is realistic.
Oh, is realistic. Oh, I thought you were saying it's not realistic.
Is realistic. No, no, no. Not for the television viewing audience. But I think what we're attempting to address long-term, we've got to stage that because we got to get to the stuff that's on first. And during the definition, we might can manage that. It just, it just depends on, you know, who are we putting together? How's the board going to look at that? What's the research beyond, behind that? At the same time, remember, we're putting together an Equity Task Force that's going to help us build some regulations and things. And so that's why I say, the pay and comp study, that's being paid for and that's going to happen by December. The definition of highly effective, we've got to operationalize that and then update the board as we go through and see, are we close enough to that definition? But again, the very next piece of this is then, how do we do some alignment between a highly effective designation and what that means for our teachers and our administrators who are evaluated in the scale and the process that the board has approved and so.
Well, the reason, I just want to keep bringing up around, does the date make sense? And if not, let's change it. Because what will happen is we will keep it December 2016. And then we're going to start to operationalize and work as though it's 2016. And then when I want to get midway through, we say, well, I don't know why we even said we could do it because it's not realistic. So if it's more realistic to say by June of 2016, let's say that.
I think that's realistic, given all the things, we have an alternative ed audit that's going to impact. That, that report will be coming late fall. We have the pay and comp study. We have a new instructional-focused school with the STEM Academy that's opening. What do we know about the schools that are continuing and their success? And then we're trying to build an equity regulation, all of this, that will help lead to that, to that, and impact budget and some other things. And so I think the definition of highly effective, probably June is more realistic. Just as I, you know, need to say to the board, as we put together an Equity Task Force to build a regulation, in a little notebook I have that I've been mapping out these things, you know, I think there are so many aspects to equity. The policy has defined it for us. But we've talked about a number of ways and places to discuss equity today. And so we've got to figure out, I got to help us with the task force, figure out what are we going to undertake in this first year?
Right.
Because we won't be able to have a soup-to-nuts regulation on equity in place because it's around school assignment, you know, all those things we've talked about. It's around school assignment. It's about, you know, who's teaching students, experienced versus novice. Not saying that one is better than the other, but who's teaching? You know, who are the administrators? Who, there's a whole host of what do we know about facilities? And so we're going to have to chunk out some of that because the task force is going to have to have a lot of conversations. And while the policy is the springboard for all of this, we're going to have to bring research to the task force so that everybody can get a shared sense of what equity means as we begin to build out these regulations and recommendations to the board around what it looks like in different entities. So that's going to be more than a single-year activity.
Dr. Robinson?
Well, and with that said, that's why having an idea what a highly effective teacher, it looks like, that'll help us with that equity distribution. My question is a little tangential on the equity issue. Will the equity report card come from you or the task force?
Right now, it's. Right now, it's, it's a report card. It's the, the task force helps to report, to create the report card. And the task force or a subgroup of that task force is what's bringing to the board that report card based upon the definitions and assessments that they've developed. But I agree with Dr. Boone, I mean, that's why it's, you know, as we continue to talk about it, we get the benefit of what Rono did, but we have to constantly, I know I have to constantly remind myself that they did that work over several years. And so some of what you see that we adopted gives the benefit of the work that they did, but it's true, it's going to take us some, some time to get there. But right now, the idea is that after that work is done, then the report card then would report to the board how we're, how we're doing in those, in those various areas.
And I guess what I'm asking for, where, where does the baseline, who, who develops the baseline?
I think, I think my team and I will help inform the baseline. This accountability plan gives us some idea. If we're using 2015, 16 data as a baseline for, for this accountability plan, you know, we're going to have to look at some historic data, but we're going to have to figure out what year we're going to use as our benchmark for, for planning ahead.
And that, my point is that I think would be, be wise if the initial report card on where we're at right now comes from the administration to guide, to guide the, the, the task force into how, how to take that and make whatever changes are necessary.
And, and I would say that it's not an initial report card, but those will be the data pieces that the equity task force will be deliberating on and using as context as we think about each, each aspects, aspect of equity. Because the report card in itself, some of this, we may not have even collected the information. So we're going to have to do it as part of the process. And that would have potential to slow down. But I'm thinking in terms of this work, what we do, I think about the way in which I approach school turnaround. What do we know historically about a school and its success or, or lack thereof? And so what do we know about attendance? What do we know about test scores? What do we know about staffing levels and turnover? What do we know about discipline and, and support services at the school, wraparound and all of that? So we pulled together as much of that data that we have to, to be that place. And then we begin to say, okay, well, what does it look like when we apply the equity overlay on this? And then we come forward that way. But I, I, I would hate to have to use critical staff time to build this report card, a comprehensive report card, to begin to initiate this work. If that's the case, the equity task force won't start anytime soon.
Well, just to, I guess, respond to that is, because Ms. Bassini and I talked about that as we were going through this. And what we were trying to encourage from the accountability plan and from the board's perspective now and from the administration is as we look at the various reports that we currently have, that we are training ourselves and educating ourselves how to look at them through an equity lens. That we begin to look at it ourselves, just from stuff that we know that we already have, but also not try to get ahead of the task force too much. Because if, my concern would be if we prescribe it, we may unintentionally narrow their view.
Or influence it.
I, I, that's not what I was suggesting. I was suggesting that we just get baseline data on where we are as a division.
Well, we have that now. The question is.
I, I'd like to see it in one document. One, and, and maybe I missed it, maybe I missed that day.
Sure. Go ahead.
I, I think I understand what Dr. Robinson is, is saying. I just, and this is a question, Dr. Boone, you can answer, is that the data that, the baseline data that we may think that we have is, you know, I guess, is that what we're comparing it to is?
I don't see that as what we're comparing it to. I just say this is the current state of affairs.
Right, okay.
And then there may be some places where we haven't necessarily quantified it, such as age of school building or number of mobile units at a building. We know those in general, but how have we quantified that as it relates to equity in terms of achievement and student outcomes? That's what we haven't done. And so, like I said, we, the, the raw data exists, but if we have to do this comprehensive reporting, then we can't start the equity task force and have those conversations and build all of this at the same time. Because what we're, in, in the research we've been doing, we have to figure out, what are all of the areas of equity that we should be looking at? We got to create an index of areas that we have to consider in equity. There are overarching pieces of equity and that's the lens through which we make decisions and, and we create opportunities. Then the next gets to everything, like I said, from staffing, facilities, resources in the building, everything, you know, how are we using our federal title funds? How are we allocating additional funds for students with disabilities and gifted students? And so every, everything that's a possibility ends up on a, a potential equity lens. We would, we're going to have to do some, bring in some basic reporting of what we know about enrollments, demographics, those things. And then a lot of the other data is going to, are going to emerge as part of our conversations and things that we learn as we research. Because equity task force is going to have to be reading and researching as we, you know, learn about what to think about in a way so we can have robust and active discussions of what does it mean for our community.
So I think we're, we're doing a little bit what we said we were going to avoid. So on the one hand, I think Dr. Robinson's point is important. And so we didn't, we don't need to go to the flip chart, but we need to make a note of coming back of how we address that balance. But we also, when we were putting this together, because we kind of had a similar conversation and we kept saying to each other, we wanted to avoid going deep and start solving it and try to make sure that at this point, that we were at least trying to capture the, the it, the monitoring, the, the philosophy of it. But I do think we need to come back and find out where we can find that balance between what Dr. Robinson is recommending and what we can realistically do in terms of both from a board perspective, what our accountability is going to be in that, and then how we address the, the operational piece of it. Trying to go to the next phase, but you're getting.
Got the notes done.
So I have two more points on this page still. So I'm on page seven still. So I appreciate the fact that we want to have an earlier commitment opportunity prior to budget adoption because I do know that that has been a challenge for us in getting folks to commit to the division. So in that vein, should we also move up the timing of when our teachers are committing to their subsequent year?
Well.
Got an identified need that if we move that up sooner, we'll have a better sense of what we need to do from one year to the next?
We, we already do the intent forms.
That's what I'm saying, should we move that up?
We can, but those are non-binding. People who are really going to leave will tell you that, you know, I intend to retire and I have whatever else. So the early commitments is really around true vacancies. One of the things that, and I've, I've worked with the NFT, they, they had a concern with the memo that we put out this year about intent cards and, and what that means. And so we also, we're going to improve the language on that. But the idea is that if you're serious that you're leaving, then go ahead and complete your A30 forms. Because we can only do commitments for true vacancies and intent cards are not binding. That's the problem. It's a planning tool, but it's not 100%.
Should we move up the timeline of which they commit to us?
Legally, June 30th is that timeline. They, you know, there, there's a, that's what the statute provides in terms of what we do. So we certainly encourage and try to put in place timelines that will help us in planning of when they leave or, or whatever else. But the statute is the only thing that's binding on that, and that's that June 30th piece. You know, we, we've done the intent cards and we did them electronically this year and that was helpful. But again, because people change their minds or say, I'm not sure, or they say yes, and knowing all along that they're going to leave for whatever reason. And so it's, it's a, a good planning tool, but it's not 100% match for what we need.
And then nextly.
And like I said, and, and truthfully, what, June 15th is our notice date to people, but their contracts run through June 30th. Say it until they, they may have looked at something else, but we'll hold on to this until they have commitment, commitment from somewhere else. It's frustrating.
Yeah.
We can't get it.
Sticky as possible, yeah. And then should we add one here that an identified need is to reduce the number of long-term subs due to the challenge of filling vacancies? Something I've heard from principals and teachers as a challenge?
I may have to defer to Dr. Bertsong and Mr. Billups about that information, reducing the number of subs.
Long-term subs, when we can't fill vacancies.
Yes, in terms of, we're just talking about in terms of a.
Identified need.
Identified need in monitoring and what we would potentially do to.
And it's, it's actually, if we're, if we're reducing the number and percentage of such positions vacant on the first day of school.
That is it.
Also reducing.
Because long-term subs can happen during the year as well.
But they happen for a variety of reasons. They're not always because we can't find, they could be health reasons.
Right.
And so I, that's why I say, if it's about, what I heard was that how do we deal with having long-term subs for a long time in true vacancies? Because we can't staff. Mr. Billis wants to come up and share something with us.
That's the point I'm getting at.
That's, that's the point. Because see, a long-term sub due to health issues or, or pregnancy is different from, we can't fill a position, we can't find an X-type of teacher, X-certified teacher.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
One thing about the long-term subs and one thing that I'm, I'm looking at right now is that this is a chronic problem, basically statewide. Because I don't know if you all know, but the state puts out a critical shortage list every year. And so I, I looked at that list the other day compared against what our vacancies are and pretty much all of them fit within that, that, that critical shortage list. A lot of people don't even realize right now that actually K-5 is on that shortage list. You wouldn't necessarily have thought that. So one thing that I have recognized with some candidates that we have, we have a number of candidates that want to come to us from out of the state. However, one of the issues is they may have a license in another state, but if you don't have three years teaching on that license in the other state, the Virginia Department of Education will not then issue you a license in Virginia unless you have then come to us and then want to take and can take and can afford to take all of the assessments associated with gaining Virginia licensure. So that's an issue right there. So I'm trying to figure out a way to talk with Patty Pitts at the, at the state as to some options we may be able, able to employ to bring some of these folks in, maybe as a long-term sub initially, or if they take the praxis too, maybe there's something we can do, some exploring, some out-of-the-box thinking. Because some of this, we are, we are, are, are hand-tied ourselves because of regulations with, within, in, within the, the state process.
So they, we don't have reciprocity unless they've done three years?
Right. It, it takes three years to, to come in. Virginia is a tough state. And so, yes, it takes three years. So you have, we have folks, we have probably about 10 to 20 candidates from other states who want to be here, but we, we can't employ them as a teacher and still remain highly qualified in that area. So we have to balance, do we, do we risk? And this, this may be one of the things that we may have to do in some cases. Risk being, having a highly qualified teacher, we may know that she's licensed in North Carolina or Georgia or somewhere like that, but in accordance with the VDOE, they would not have issued her a license because she didn't, he or she did not have the three years at their, at their previous state.
So I guess.
So that affects, and then, and then it becomes a financial issue because some of these individuals may, may feel like, well, I can't really afford to come there to be a long-term substitute, you know, for no benefits at all. And then technically, a long-term substitute is only supposed to be in the position for 90 days with, with the same group of, group of students. So it's, it's a really, it's a really tough situation.
I guess to the point of our plan, you have the, reduce the number, percentage of positions vacant on the first day of school. I guess the question is for right now, at this time, is that sufficient for us? Or is it something that we should add that speaks specifically to the long-term? Or whatever, whatever we call it, and so what should that language be?
I think, I think that's part of the, I think that's what we would find in those data. When we report the number of positions not staffed by a permanent teacher and meeting the certification credentials, then who's in that place? And so I think that's where that report of the long-term sub should emerge through that.
Where is that report?
By asking that question, what you just described.
Yes.
So you're saying where, where we currently have reduced the number and percentage of positions vacant on the first day of school is an appropriate need? And then under the indicator and strategy of the report, make sure that we are, we have increased the number of board reports on teacher retention quality and effectiveness. I'm just trying to figure out, is it something under the indicator or strategy that we need to make sure that we're included so we don't lose?
Well, the strategy to try to fill them is the idea about, I meant, the need was about being able to offer early commitment. And that also then becomes one of the strategies to help us figure out, are we closing some of those gaps? So I think we are okay with the way it is. So when we report to the board, the number and percentage of classrooms staffed by a fully licensed teacher at the beginning of the school year, then we can show whether that was, you know, when, by the time we do this report for the board, let's say latter part of September, early October, we can say that was only a two-day vacancy, we were able to hire. This one, it still has a long term in it. And so we can share what's going on with those positions, how many positions are long-term, how many have been there, and then what's, what's the challenge to fill them?
Just, just so we don't lose it? If it's somewhere in the indicator or strategy, we can, we put a note?
I, I.
Okay, you got it?
Got it.
And then we also always need to make sure that when we're speaking of long-term subs, we're really talking about substitutes who are in for a vacancy. Because one thing I spot sometimes is that because someone is out on an FMLA leave or medical leave and it's a sub in there, sometimes people think that, well, my child has a sub or whatever. Yes, they have a sub to segue while the person is, is recovering or, or whatever their, their reason why they are out. But that doesn't really count as a long-term sub reporting purposes because that, the teacher of record is a teacher who's actually out on the, the official leave. And sometimes some folks will get confused with that too.
So is everybody comfortable with us moving to the next one? Because we're about halfway through.
Yep. All right, thank you. All right, so next focus area, this came out of our discussion last, two weeks ago. Talking a lot about the need to focus on literacy. You know, we, it, it came up toward the end of our discussion around our accountability plan at the last meeting. However, we, from a board level, in terms of what the identified need should be, I don't know if at this time you want to just, you know, leave it as is until you all have a chance to, you know, collaborate with us and have a chance to actually think over what those identified needs might be that we haven't already addressed. Or again, as we talked about already, there, there are areas that we're going to talk about multiple different focus areas. But are there any that you know of right now that we can add at this moment?
We, we were trying to avoid getting into the initiatives. But we also wanted to note that we had talked about as a board, the issues around literacy. So we kind of just put it there as a placeholder to, you know, say to the experts, hey, we know that we've talked about it, but we need some guidance as to how, how and if we build it out, or is it already going to be captured in what we've already, what we've already have done? So I don't know if we're going to do that right now, but we.
Right, yeah. That's what I'm saying, you can go, you can go back and look over the academic achievement piece and see if we've already, you think from a board level sufficiently addressed literacy.
That's what I, I was going to suggest, and maybe we include some explicit language around literacy as part of it. Because we, you know, the, the challenge is how do we define reading on grade level? How do we define literacy being in terms of reading, reading proficiency, reading comprehension and writing proficiency? And so, you know, we, we think about, we have writing scores in here, we have English scores which include reading. And so, yeah, give us a minute to go back and see if we can address literacy embedded within some of the English in those standards.
However, I don't want it so embedded that we don't know that a program's in place that's focusing on literacy. Because I know you said you wanted to put a literacy program together.
No, literacy plan.
Plan. So when is it that that's, plan's going to be done and implemented so that we? Plan. So, when is it that that's, plan's going to be done and implemented so that we know, okay, now we need to, we can say, here it is. Here's the plan.
Well, you recall at Grandy, when the impromptu, when I was doing the report of the first hundred days, the question came up where we were with the literacy plan, and Dr. Rogers and Dr. Cataldo indicated that what had been put in place and the fact that we're working with William and Mary to see if they can help us do an audit of our literacy practices that are already in place, so that that too can help inform the plan. We aren't not doing certain things that we know we need to address for literacy, such as the guided reading training that we did for kindergarten through second grade, uh, teachers this spring. And we will be doing grades three through five this fall. And so, probably the, the board has become accustomed to a specific program to address something. Our literacy plan will have some resource supports in terms of extra programs or whatever else. But the core of that is going to be about how do we approach literacy in teaching across the curriculum and reading itself? So, it's not going to be as specific as we're going to have this program to do X. It's, the professional development is going to be a heavy piece of that, because what do we know? If we, if we stay with the, um, dimensions of reading from the National Reading Panel, then what do we do to shore up our capacity around phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, what we do with word study, what we do with comprehension and all of that? So, there will be all of those pieces embedded around how we will approach the teaching of literacy and not necessarily what we're doing in those pieces, if, if that makes sense. And on, Dr. Rogers, anything you want to add to that?
No, just other than the fact that I sat here and I'm looking at it from a lens from, uh, from the board and thinking uh, that the document is certainly, uh, based on what you all would like to see as an outcome. And I think one of the outcomes is, one of the outcomes is that we in fact have a literacy model that's, um, systemic through K through twelve. And one thing that I, I would like for you to consider, uh, and I, as I looked at some of the other things that we've talked about this evening with regard to student achievement, is, um, and I know, but maybe getting too grand here, but when we look at our third grade proficiency levels at, at reading, uh, and it certainly is an indicator with regards to how students achieve after they leave us in K-12 education. Uh, it's a national epidemic that sixty-seven percent of our students nationwide are not reading at, like, reading on grade level by third grade, and eighty percent, more than eighty percent are not reading, um, on grade level by third grade if they are economically disadvantaged. So, it's just something to think about um, as we look at our goals from a board level, uh, as it relates to what, what the work is, um, with academic affairs, so.
Okay. So, along, uh, the lines with the identified needs, I think that we've covered a lot of them already in some of the previous indicators. Um, so what I would say that I would actually like to have a report on, if we're going to really separate out our reading program, is to see the breakdown of, um, curriculum instruction and then supplemental instruction. And what I mean by supplemental is, are we, are we funding, um, computer programs? Or like, um, I, I, I start reading. Am I confusing, I reading? Read one-eighty. Read one-eighty program, like.
As a supplemental.
As a supplemental. So, are we, are we, are we, um, doing supplemental programs to assist the reading plan program that you have?
Literacy plan.
The literacy plan. Uh, so I would, I would like to have, uh, a report that addresses that and to see how effective they are, because that also has budget, uh, ties. And then, on the professional development side, I would like to, for us to look at how other communities have worked with their, um, um, partners outside of the school, rec centers, um, uh, senior centers maybe, and to see how they have worked with them to help provide literacy help to children um, who are attending their after-school programs, YMCA, things like that. So, uh.
And we, that's what we do with a number of our entities, partnership with the public library and the things that they do for summer literacy. Um, you know, we have reading buddies that come into many of the schools. Officers and retirees and others who come in and read with students on a, a regular basis to help, having the students primarily read to them to help improve their confidence and, and skills around reading. So, absolutely, we can show all that we're doing to address that, that core. And that's something, you know, we already have, I have on, on my planning document for the year that we will, when we're ready to roll out aspects of the, of the literacy piece, but we're still working with William and Mary to help us figure out what do we have in place.
Right, because when, uh, when the kids leave the building, and, um, as Ms. Doyle brought up last time, sometimes it's that, you know, need help as well. And so, you know, what's take, what, what are we doing to look also at what's going on outside of the building? And if, and if we can get, not Norfolk Public Schools, but city entities, the library, rec centers to help with literacy on their end, which I know that they're doing right now. They're doing that right now.
I'm pointing at Dr. Burtsong. That's part of that wraparound piece. What are we raffing around our children outside of time?
Even as simple as we have, um, you know, reflex math on our, well, we have X reading program on our computers in school. Let's make sure the libraries have those reading programs in there, you know, in the libraries and things like that. So, that way, everybody is tackling the problem together or helping the problem.
So, in the, um, section around community and parent engagement, we did note those. I just, um, I guess we just have to figure out, maybe we just need to earmark it. Um, how do we deal with the literacy issue at a, at a board level that out of focusing on individual programs and, and outputs and focused on outcomes? We didn't have an answer, but we wanted to make sure we didn't lose it, and that's why we put it out there for, for folks to.
I didn't, you guys can give us. Dr. Robbins has it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Uh, two things. One, I hope, uh, whatever plan that we develop is embedded, um, into that plan are measures on, uh, how it's working and success. If not.
Lot, if not, it's a waste of our time.
And the second thing is, is that maybe that's why we need to relook at some of our committees, because are we stat, are we having committees that we're meeting with Parks and Rec, and are we having committees that meet with the library board to open those lines of communication, as well as, as increase our communication with the city council and, and the things that that.
On, on the last piece, um, board members that would like to, uh, attend, uh, those meetings, we're free to do that. I didn't make a point because part of the conversation that we have is, uh, you know, time and effort. And so, since we were working on so many things and looking at how to, um, reallocate our time and resources and priorities, but believe me, if anybody liked to volunteer to, uh, participate there, we could do that. The other piece associated with that was making sure that as we participated with libraries and, um, rec centers and so forth, are we having conversations in those committees at a governance level? Or are we finding ourselves having conversations at a operational implementation level? So, you know, part of this whole exercise is try to make sure that, uh, we have the open lines of communication, but also make sure that we have in a way that it's peer-to-peer. And so, one of the, um, you know, we are meeting with, uh, um, you know, the mayor and the city manager and, and begin those processes of having those discussions around our joint meetings and our collaborations and our committees from a governance perspective. But again, if, if anybody wants to, uh, go attend any of the, uh, uh, committees, I know Ms., uh, Banks would be more than happy to, uh, coordinate with, uh, you know, with their staffs to make sure that we're there. So, we just didn't want to be sitting there and there's a staff-level conversation, and you don't have your governance peers at the table, and we're dealing with governance issues. So, I don't know if that answers it or not, but.
Well, I, I just think we need to be intentional about it. I, I agree with you. We don't want to get into the operations of how that, how that occurs, but we need to have the, have the conversations with the head of the, the, the library, library board and say, listen, this is the initiatives that we're having, and, and these are initiatives you're having. Let's, let's work together. And how, how do we break down those barriers? Same thing with the Parks and Rec. You know, we've, we've had issues with Parks and Rec, and we've had issues with the library board for years that can be overcome, that we can have success for all our, our, our students and residents.
Say, when you say library board, because we've had some good relationships with library staff. You know, the head librarian and those types of things, and they're very supportive of things that we're doing.
Always be intentional about it.
Note it. Yeah. Where were we?
So, now, next goal, safe and secure 21st century learning environments. First focused area is facilities. There's a lot here. We broke it out, um, by facilities and then included, um, you know, many different areas in terms of not just the recommendations of the DeJong-Richter facilities study, um, which would address some of the over and under enrollment of schools and school choice options. Um, but also, you know, the new construction that we have and planning for the next phase of, um, maintenance and construction that may come down the line. Um, so one of the things that I do want to point out that we had discussed previously to include in our indicators or under facilities is to develop a five-year facilities maintenance improvement plan. And that needs to, to be included here as a need, um, in which we would then develop, flesh out, you know, the board level indicator of having um, reports and monitoring of the development of that plan. So, that, that needs to be included in here. So, I do, um, so there are two things that need to be included that I, um, accidentally left out was the development of the five-year facilities maintenance improvement plan. And, uh, we also discussed annually updating the five-to-ten-year capital improvement plan. That needs to be incorporated in here as well.
How is that different?
What? Okay, they were listed as two different. That's why I was wondering why. Well, once goes to five to ten years.
I think it's already there. They, they've done that.
What's that?
We have that planned.
But to update it as we determine what the.
Sure.
Yeah.
Next priority is because as we.
Right, that's what I mean, to annually update the plan.
No, next fall this time, we'll be opening Ocean View in Larchmont, and then, you know, the Camp Allen has the federal connection with it. Not sure exactly where we are with timelines of that. But, y, you know, it's time to begin what are our next set of priorities for major construction, new construction or major rehab, so.
Would, I, I see that you have alternative ed as one of your new initiative, school choice options. Is that the review of our, our, all of our, um, alternative ed programs?
Yeah. We, we were just trying to note, to note it and make sure it didn't get lost.
Okay. Cause it just came to my mind that we hadn't discussed that yet.
Yeah, I mentioned it earlier that we're going to have.
Is that what the educational opportunity? I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, when I, I said, you know, we have the alternative ed audit and review that's underway. Yeah.
Ms. Doyle?
So, we do have a deadline of when we know we're going to get the alternative ed. We know primary years IV, CTE, the one there, the Regional Career Pathway Center. So, where is it on this chart? We're going to know when we're going to have movement on that.
On the CTE?
Don't know.
Is that what you're?
Don't know. We don't know. And that's where, uh, so we were trying to, um, note it in the, in the needs area. It's a, you know, from a board perspective, we know the actions that we can take. From a collaboration perspective with, with others, we're, we're working on that. So, we were trying to make sure that we noted the CTE. But we don't, we don't have a benchmark date to, um, uh, to deal with it as a complete item, because it, it involves more than just us. So, if there's a recommendation of what you think we should add in any of the columns in terms of what we control, um, we can definitely do that. But I don't know how to put a deadline on the overall process, because it involves.
Well, at the very minimum, we need to reengage all the partners that we've been meeting with over the course of years.
Yeah, we acknowledge that.
And we need to look at the program development that you wanted to do further that, that was already established. And so, there's things that we need to start doing again that we have not really.
And, right, and I, just this week, have had, uh, a couple of conversations regarding that. And what we need to do, I had lunch about three weeks ago with someone, again, how do we jumpstart th, this work? And so, we haven't stepped away. Ms. Goshen and I continue to have conversations about what are some next steps and some things we're putting in place. So, I would think sometime in September, by the latter part of September, we should at least be at a place of an update of where we headed, because, um, it's all for a number of purposes. But we, it's not because we left the table. Let's be clear.
And frankly, it's also part of the conversations that we are having with the, the new mayor and the manager and the leadership there, because they have some ideas. And so, those conversations are, uh, taking place. Matt, I thought we'd have a conversation Friday. So, it's not gone away, um, but we are re-engaging as, uh, they get their things together and as we continue to push forward. Oh, sorry.
Um, a point that I noted for the facilities, uh, and I'm glad, Tanya, that you mentioned, uh, that specifically five-year facility improvement CIP plan. Uh, but I would like for us to specifically look at, um, our, um, recreational equipment and play spaces that we have at each of the schools, gyms, playground, um, play surface areas, tennis courts, tracks, all of that. Um, because I think that sometimes that can get lost within the actual facility, and then we forget, um, or we can, uh, you know, lose sight, is the city maintaining this? Are we maintaining this? But I would like for us to look at those, uh, areas and to see if they're being maintained, um, how they're being used, and is it up to, uh, community? I guess this might be able to tie into community input, or is the community able to, um, um, access them uh, for, for their use as well? So.
Uh, one of the thing, you know, we have the facilities assessment report, and maybe we can put in parentheses those examples to make sure that, um, I don't know what you call them, they're auxiliary. I don't, I don't know what the technical language is.
I don't, I don't want it to be embedded in each school. I want it to be its own separate focus category, so that we are specifically addressing recreational, and it really ties into health and physical activity, which directly relates to student achievement, um, and morale and climate and all of that. So.
I'm just asking. So, on the, on the report, tell me, explain what you want and where you want it.
I would like for, under the board level indicator, under the facilities plan, when we have a, an update on the five-year facility improvement plan, as a part of that plan, a category that addresses our, uh, recreational, physical education.
And athletic.
Athletics, athletics.
Athletic facilities.
Athletic facilities.
Regardless of who they're maintained by.
Right.
Of their state of the union. Budget. Cycle.
Right. So, I was, so I was asking where, under, where it currently says, I know, Tanya mentioned the other one, where it currently says maintenance slash review, and it says facilities assessment report. I'm asking, would it be appropriate, under that facilities assessment report, to itemize or note the areas that you just mentioned?
Where are you looking?
That's what, right.
I think, yeah, I think it's because I had, it wasn't included here, so we're going to include the development of, uh, or, or update of that, and then, under board level indicator, include that, um, that we would get a board report on the facility. that we would get a board report on the facilities maintenance plan. But including specifically under that, that we want a report on playground equipment, recreation equipment, other recreation equipment, athletic grounds. And as Mr. Oates has said, regardless of who's responsible for maintaining them.
I'm just, so under, I'm on pa, on page 11.
On page 10.
Right, we go to this, it continues, it continues down.
Yeah.
And there it says, maintenance slash review.
Yeah, right.
And the third bullet says, facilities assessment report. So I'm asking if, under that facilities assessment report, would that be an appropriate location to note these items that, that you've described?
For, yes, and if that also means that we're also looking five years down the road, then I think, then that would be fine too. So are we saying that, is that, I think what Tanya is saying is the facilities assessment report is the five-year.
Wouldn't that be, I, I guess I was assuming that that facilities assessment report is incorporated or is in es, in essence, the same, the same thing?
So, so I'm just, so...
I'm asking for clarification on that.
So I'm going to yield to those of you that are on the, whatever we renamed the construction committee, facilities committee. In my mind, there's a baseline, like Ms. Doyle has, that describes projects, right? But then what I heard Dr. Gabriel say is, what is the current status? So whether, when, you know, DeJean Richter went in and looked at a lot of different use of facilities. I'm asking, is it, are we saying that, under the facilities assessment report, if we were going to baseline how our tennis courts and tracks and other items that you mentioned, what their current score is, how we would evaluate them? Would that not be initially in a facilities assessment report? And then the five-year plan describes how we would try to address it?
Yes.
So I'm, that's what I was saying, under the facilities assessment report, would that be the appropriate place for what's the current status?
Yes, we can do a book.
Right.
Facility, not just being the building itself, but its grounds and, and facilities that support play, recreation and activity.
That's why I think a spe, a separate breakout is, is critical to get a good idea of, of the state of the, of where we're at and what we need to do to get where we want to go.
So we're, we're good with that then?
Yeah.
All right. Yes, that, and then who would be in charge of that, I guess, would be facilities and, and the athletics.
And, and that's the, right, and that's what I'm saying, and that's where we're always trying to...
I know, I know. They're trying not to get below, get into...
Turn it over to them and, but we want to make sure that... That's why we're doing this. We're changing our culture.
Okay. So, and, and anything else related to facilities at this point?
But safe and, you mean overall, safe and secure learning environments or just?
I'm talking about overall facilities, because then we have the next piece of that is technology.
Proceed then.
Under technology, it's actually, I needed to move that out of, into a different focus area. But if you look under technology on page 11, some of what we believe to be some of the identified needs, which we hadn't previously included in the indicators. But you want to take a look and see, especially Dr. Boone and Dr. Bailey, if you think that...
They've looked at it. I guess what we were trying to make sure is that we captured what we were hearing from the, from the board, that, one, we didn't want to lose sight of the the technology support around academic achievement and, and climate. And that, uh, and that the board was comfortable, that we've captured at least that initial component of it. Dr. Gabriel?
You know, I was just thinking in my mind about, do we have the computer labs, the, the hardware necessary in order to do the SOL testing every year? Are we up, up to date with that process in a particular school? Because it, it seems like there's, that there might be pockets of schools that are being really creative with how they do their testing. And it's really due to the availability of computer labs, computer space for them. Now, that might not have anything to do with this, but it's just a thought since we're...
On that second bullet, where it mentions increased percentage of schools meeting district technology standards for digital learning environments, that's, that's inclusive in that.
I think also here, we'll probably work with our IT department to review. It sounds like this particular section, we're trying to combine several reports, facilities plan, the technology plan, to support curriculum instruction plan. And so we'll need to work with Mr. Hurdle on reviewing these, just to make sure we've captured it adequately.
Okay.
And then fill in the rest of the pieces for you there, because they do have a technology plan. And I have not looked at that. I'm not sure how familiar you are with where we are with the technology plan.
But, but to your point, Dr. Bailey, when we were looking at this, we struggled. Whether or not the technology piece should be under academics and teaching and learning area versus being under a facilities piece where it may continue a view of the technology separate from its role in advancing...
Stabilizing.
Right, so we, and that's what Ms. Bassin mentioned earlier, we, we kept it there because it was easier to note it there in terms of facilities. But we, we're putting it out there that if it needs to move or if it needs to be shown in different places, you know, feel free. But we want to make sure we didn't just see the technology, technology from the operational standpoint than is the technology to support the outcomes.
And, and I would say, the way it's listed he, listed here, we're focused on the infrastructure that's available so that our students can have access to digital learning over time. And then the rest of it will show up in the various comments and reports about what are we doing to make a difference in achievement? So we can show what we're doing and how we're doing it. But this does have a deep facility connection because of the one that talks about the percent, a number of schools that are totally wireless. And, you know, how many devices do we have? What do our devices look like? The value of what goes on here occurs then back up in the student achievement piece. How are we integrating technology in order to accomplish things? So I, I think the way we function as a team, it won't be technology, for technology's sake anymore.
Okay. Great. I'm going to try to tackle discipline, because we thought that was going to be the one that might capture a lot of interest.
Well, we're, we're here, so we're at discipline. And I know, I know all of us feel a sense of urgency around this focus area. So, um, you know, we tried to capture a lot of the indicators that we talked about, also taking into account, looking at the gap groups and trying to address some of the disparity that we know that appears to exist. So, um, and also taking into account increasing the fidelity of PBIS implementation, which we had talked about in February. So if there's anything in terms of other items or other needs and how we address those needs, I mean, we have included under board level indicators, a number of reports. If there is a need to increase the reporting or have different reports...
Just, just to add to that, with the PBIS pieces, we were working through this and we were tracking or monitoring suspensions and rule violations and harassments and so forth. We said, well, where do we monitor positive outcomes? And so one way we thought was trying to at least capture it from the PBIS perspective. But if there's some other positive outcomes that are outside of that framework, I don't, I don't know. But we wanted to make sure that, as a board, we weren't just monitoring the negative behaviors and actions, but that we were also trying to make sure that, as a board, we thought it was important that we were noting and rewarding and trying to make sure that our work was leading to positive outcomes as well.
I would say unfortunately, too often in education, we take the deficit view. It's what's not working rather than what is working. You know, we talked, I think we approached it differently when we talked about staff and we talked about retention. We didn't talk about who was leaving. We talked about what are we doing to retain them? And so, you know, the, the way in which we usually categorize what's going on is by who's suspended, what are the infractions and all of that. I, I, I think the other thing is, when we talk about a PBIS implementation, we certainly need to talk about with that, with implementation of fidelity. But I've mentioned to the board before, we're also going to have to look at what's the most appropriate work for secondary. PBIS is really, while it has been extended and, and in some places can work well in the secondary setting, PBIS is pretty much an elementary, maybe early middle school program. And so what are the pieces that we're going to be exploring to help our upper middle school and high schools to have an effective place? And what I've said internally, as we've talked in, in district staff, is that, and I think I said this to the principals when we were together at the Leadership Institute, we, we address PBIS as what the students need to do. But when you fully implement PBIS, it's also what do the adults need to do in order to shift the culture in the school where everybody is respectful of each other and knows things that happen? And so fidelity, again, these are just points to think, but fidelity with PBIS is not just about what students need to do, but also what adults need to do.
Right, and we did, we did talk about that as well, so I want to be clear on that. And I apologize, that's not reflected here, but we talked about that. Oh, yeah, I did, for students and teachers. Positive outcomes, but...
Reverend Haywood?
So I, I believe that there probably is other ways in which to measure this. And I think that if we, that with the principal people who are doing this, to help develop what those benchmarks greater success at measuring the, the impact of PBIS. So I'm, I'm glad that you, you see the importance of, of coming at it from a positive perspective as opposed to a deficit. And I have also said, and I just want to continue to say, that I think that PBIS and restorative justice should go together. And restorative justice may be the answer to the secondary school issues surrounding behavior. And of course, that is a very positive approach as well. So again, I, I, I think that, that the benchmark has to be developed with those principals who are, not principals, but those major people who are, who are implementing and training in PBIS.
There may be standard PBIS indicators that we want to look at and incorporate here. But would, so I have a question based on Reverend Haywood's suggestion with the, and I know we've kind of touched on this in terms of using restorative justice at the secondary level. But we don't, I guess, in the full program sense, use that. Is that something that we want to include here as to consider?
I would say, and while I certainly concur with Reverend Haywood, is the, the power of restorative justice. But for the sake of the board's accountability plan, so as not to have it driven by programs, we do have PBIS there and we know why we have it, that we say we continue to explore or something opportunities for secondary schools to find that level of success around behavior and not necessarily identify what it will be, because the research may, may show us that may be what we need at one level or we need something else. And so I, I think its focus should be on what do we do to strengthen secondary opportunities? Similar to PBIS or something like that.
And again, we tried to, as much as we could, avoid specific programs. We just, when we were talking about the, the positive outcomes, we just kind of put that there as a note because we knew that was a focus.
Yeah, that's what I said, we, we understand the PBIS, but that's also an invest, a significant investment we've made
Right.
in time and resources, so.
This is also another area we wanted to work with the department leaders on to review what you have here as well, to make sure that we have the information, we're collecting it and are able to benchmark it out. There are a couple of areas that we feel may pose some challenges, but we wanted to talk with the department leaders first.
Just one other thing. The Mid-Atlantic Equity Center that tracks these kinds of things are keeping, keeping data about the various divisions and so forth. Has there been any consideration to looking at our, our position in this area with reference to the data that they keep as part of what we are tracking here? Since that is an important element for us, that the public is not very much aware of, why, you know, we are working so hard to, to increase, to improve in the area of this?
Are you asking, are we making sure that we compare our performance locally, statewide and nationally?
Yes, but in particular with the, as it concerns the Mid-Atlantic Equity Center, yes.
Dr. Boone, you...
Well, I, I mean, I think we can certainly look at that report. Most of what they have in those reports are taken directly from state discipline reports or anything we may have to report to the federal government. What becomes unique in that is their analysis of it. And that's usually where, where we get some pieces. But I think, again, we can look at that and come back to the board and see if that's one of the areas we want to reference in terms of benchmarks and standards.
Shall we move on?
District climate?
All right, district climate. Here you will find some of the composite measures for teacher, students. And students have been pulled out from the district climate survey that is used every year. I don't know if we want to use all of these composite measures or if you have a recommendation for select ones that you think from a board level will be pertinent for us to use?
What I would like to off, is, offer as a suggestion, these are the composite items. But if we've looked at previous reports in which, which we have, I think we could streamline our focus by picking a few of those, a couple, three or so of those that have some data points that have been particularly concerning to us as it relates to overall climate and focus on those rather than everything that's here.
Yeah, I agree.
Because again, we, this, this is making us very broad and yet very thin. Because when you start looking at each one, the impact of an accountability plan is when you focus on fewer things that you can really concentrate your efforts and your attention to, to see what you can do to get the results that you need. And so I would recommend that we look at some of the, the areas and look at previous reports and figure out what are the ones we should really take on in this year that, that are, are very concerning with the way in which they've been rated by students, parents and, and staff.
And just to add to that now, yielded Dr. Gabriel, part of the discussion was not just the board monitoring survey results, but part of what we want to try to, recommend that we try to get to is, what's the board's role in action that we take to make sure that we're seeing positive climate and positive climate outcomes throughout the division? So when we were looking at some of the past accountability plans and some of the past measures, measures, you know, somebody may report that morale is low. And then immediately the, you know, the board conversation will be, well, what is it that the teacher needs to do, or the principal needs to do, or the central administrator needs to do to deal with why the morale is low? But we don't necessarily have conversations about, well, are we contributing to a positive morale, or are we contributing somehow to negative? So in addition to just looking at the, the composite items or focusing on two or three, I just think it's important that we don't lose sight of, you know, our role and it just doesn't turn into a monitoring of division operations, but we talk about openly and frankly about things that we can be doing from a board level, from a board policy level, from we talk about with family engagement, whatever it is. We've talked about incentives, those types of things. So the board also has ownership and accountability in the outcomes that we say we want, that we want to, want to achieve. Dr. Gabriel?
Okay, and my comments follow along those lines as well, because you can speak with a certain group of parents and everything is, is wonderful and they're thrilled, and then you can speak with another group of parents, teachers or students, and you get a different perspective. My concern comes back into the actual reporting of the climate survey. And I, I'm asking if it would be feasible for us, since we, since we, we had somewhat of a, an ad hoc survey that was done by Human Resources a couple of years ago, and out of that, we had a teacher task force that went together. I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile to put together a collection of folks within the division to actually look at our climate survey, to see if it is really identifying certain needs that are on the minds of our employees, of our parents, of our community partners? And I say that because I, I, I think that when we talk about discipline and we talk about teacher morale, I think we need to have frequent check-ins. And so, under the board level indicators with the reports, personally, I would like to have an initial check-in, a mid-year check-in, and an end-of-the-year check-in. That's anonymous, that's, that we look at high yield, and, and then we not only look at the reports, but then look at what we're doing to address the concerns that are coming out of the reports.
Let me address the three-time-a-year check-in. One of the things we know about morale in teaching and learning environments is that generally mid-year is going to be low because of factors of winter, because of factors of being at it and just kind of tired and need a break, and all those things are coming together. So I guess I'm, I'm offering and asking that if we know we're gonna see some challenges mid-year, because that's just generally what happens in teaching and learning environments, how do we figure out at the beginning and, and, and the end of the school? Because if, we have to be careful that we don't end up over-assessing our adults as we say we over-assess our children, you know? Because people get survey fatigue. And if it's truly going to be meaningful, then what is it that we, that, that we want to know? I, I think I'm hearing clearly what you're saying about the, the annual surveys. I do believe that the areas we are surveying and including in our climate survey are those that are very much nationally recognized as being pertinent in, in teaching and learning environments. So I, I would discourage our strain away from that, because then we won't ever get longitudinal data. If what we are trying to do is always address what last year's issues were, and then we add more questions about last year's issues, then that might have just been a blip in the screen, but we are still collecting on that. And either we have to keep the surveys pretty consistent so that we can see some trends, or, and you know, and every time we do a major change, then we can no longer consider the trend from the prior years or, or look at it. And then off of that, I, I don't know how, I don't have a resolution to it, but I, I am concerned with a, a three-time-a-year, because we're really talking about three times in 10 months. Remember, an academic year is pretty much 10, 10 and a half months. So we'll be talking about three times in 10 and a half months and not so sure that that's gonna drive what it is we're trying to have.
Okay, well, I think that, like, for example, are there any questions on our climate survey that ask teachers about PBIS?
Specifically, no, but there are a number of questions about student behavior.
About student behavior? Okay.
And it is research-based, because we worked with Dr. Shannon Moran out of the College of William &amp; Mary, who's written a book and did her graduate work under Dr. Wayne Hoy, who was a nationally recognized study, nationally recognized faculty member out of Ohio State dealing with school climate. So that was, that was how the teacher and student surveys and actually the parent survey questions came about through work with her a number of years ago.
Okay. My concern is that we are not getting a well-rounded assessment of some of the newer things that we're putting forth. And it could be, we could be receiving a lot of excellent feedback, or we could be receiving pockets of negative feedback. And my question is, how do we as a board make decisions about whether or not to continue a certain program or a process or to change things?
Well, first and foremost, the climate survey is not program evaluation. The climate survey is with all the policies and things we have in place, are we seeing overarching improvements in some of these key composite areas? Program evaluation is totally different. And so, that's where, again, with, with our department and others outside that we've brought in to help us look at things, that's where we know where we are. So therefore, we have the Alternative Ed Audit that's about to happen. We talked about a literacy audit, what do we have in place, or do we have any gaps? That's where we get at the issues of program evaluation. But this climate survey is really, given all things that have been done, have we moved the needle on toward more positive climate and morale and outcomes as is viewed by teachers, students and parents?
So when should we expect to get feedback on the most recent climate survey?
I have to.
That's, that's something we have, we can talk about in agenda planning. I mean, it's a.
If we're, if we're looking at reports, well, when, if we're looking at reports and we're trying to put on the calendar when we're supposed to expect certain things, then about roughly, because I was going back a couple of years to see, you know, when we normally got the report. I think it was in, was it in September that we normally got the report?
General, I was gonna say, generally, we've done it September, October, November timeframe, depending upon when it was scheduled for board discussion.
So in terms of here, reports e- every fall, which will give us, again, the idea of not having reports, having a report is not just about talking about the numbers, but what are we doing with that information to address certain things that emerge from that? And so, when we do it in, in, in early to mid-fall, we still have time for mid-course adjustments. But recognizing, again, as an administrative team and staff, because we are closer to the work, we kind of anticipate certain things that we know may show up on those climate surveys, and we're already seeking to address those. And so, we'll be able to talk about what's been in place and talk about any other future direction around certain things.
Right.
So that's why, if you notice, we highlighted in progress towards eliminating them if issues arise. And so, we were trying to say from the board perspective, not only do we want to focus in on whatever particular areas, but make sure that we are, when it comes to us, actually giving attention to those areas of what's actually happening, what are we doing to support the positive outcomes that we want to see?
Absolutely. And, and then, do you think that with getting the report maybe sooner than the fall would be beneficial so that you can do those course corrections before the school year? I'm, I'm just asking.
We're already working, like I said, we can recognize by working with schools, looking at discipline, things that we already addressed, we, we have our finger on the pulse of things that'll, that need attention. What the climate survey does is sometimes really show us, wow, we didn't expect that this was a challenge. So as we use this information, I think early fall is that composite piece, but because we leave our windows open long enough to get larger amounts of participation, if we do it earlier, then we're gonna have to close our windows early so that we can get greater analysis, and it's more effective for us to leave it open and hopefully get higher participation.
I would like to add that what we have done in the past is we have provided draft reports for our principals about teachers and students so that they could then share and plan by the end of the school year. In the past, if the board wanted to know more about that, perhaps at a summer retreat, we have gleaned some information from there that we could share. The climate survey certainly is a perception at a given point in time. And so, in the past, we have done some spot checks. If there were certain initiatives that were put in place and we wanted to get a pulse of how it was going or the perception of it, whether it would be at the high school level or whether it would be at the elementary level, maybe parents. But the, the plan of the climate survey is to capture a feeling at a given point in time. And we have been challenged by the various time periods to try to see how we could have a, certain impact on the results. And so, we will be looking at what we will be doing next year as we move forward and as that ties in to support everything else that we're doing.
And you guys do a wonderful job with reporting the data and putting it together. You are.
Thank you.
Ms. Bassin?
The one, the one thing I do think that we, we need to consider adding here is participation from teachers and students. I, I don't, I, you know, I know you just, Dr. Boone just mentioned, you know, you keep the window open long enough, however, and you may be with teachers, but I know as a parent, that the window may be open, but our outreach to parents are ve, is very limited, very minimal. And I say that, you know, because I think I learned about it just by visiting the website, and I know most parents aren't actively going to the website. I think some schools and teachers have let their parents know, but, you know, the window can be open for three months, but if parents don't know that it's still open and hasn't closed, then, you know, it's kind of pointless to keep it open. So, you know, I'd like to know what the response rates are for each of those subgroups.
Usually include that.
Yeah, and that is usually included, but I noticed it last year, I think. Find it, because I had notes remarkably high, but.
Right, for the parents, it was low.
Last year's survey was also done by an outside group, wasn't it? The one that I saw in August?
The climate survey?
Who was the one that was presented last July or August from someone?
Or a climate, it may have been the, the HR survey, but.
No, this was, someone from William &amp; Mary or something did a report last summer?
That was on Open Campus, I believe. No, that was Old Dominion.
Old Dominion did one on Open Campus.
Okay, I, maybe, I was, I remember when I was doing some research on the district, I came across.
There have been a number of doctoral dissertations done on Norfolk State from William &amp; Mary.
Because it, the, the article in the paper caught my attention about morale and climate, and so I know, and it didn't seem to be the district who was presenting when I looked back at a, at a tape of the meeting, but.
So before all the sugar, before all the sugar runs out, just first to Ms. Bassin's point, we also touched on the parental survey and the engagement piece in the next page that we'll get to soon. But I wanted to give Reverend Haywood the opportunity for some input.
So I know that new and beginning or here in Norfolk, that their perception of climate is very connected to teacher support. And it may be that I'm just not fully aware of how effective our support of new teachers are, is, have the perception that we could do more in that area, which I think would improve climate for these teachers. And so, in this doc, in this instrument, there should be somewhere where we're able to track how we're supporting our new and beginning teachers.
That was the discussion that we had in, in that section about new teacher and, and administr, and principal mentoring. So we, we did bring that in under the retention piece for staff. So we were very clear, we would do that.
And so, that's connected to climate, I think.
Right, and then, again, that's one of those, those pieces that if we've done that well, we'll begin to see bumps in the teacher satisfaction or things from the climate survey. Okay.
So I guess our task before us is, is working to come back with these narrow focus areas and plus the other input that we've had. So again, we, we just pulled because, one, we knew what we've talked about as a board and also knew some of these areas, but we put that there just so that we can have this very discussion around what may make sense in terms of focus and inaction.
I thought I was hearing two things, you know, in terms of, you know, yes, we were saying narrowing the focus, but then I think, Dr. Boone, you brought up a great point in terms of, you know, this year, you know, student safety be, might, might have been the big concern, but next year, you know, we might be missing.
Right, and so that's why, rather than try to do them all, let's look at the data and find those that need our greatest level of attention, that we are most concerned by the ratings.
Right, okay.
The few of those, not all of them.
Right. So if everyone else is good with.
Last page.
With that, let's go to the community and parent engagement. Let's go to the first focus area around parents. Just as we did with the teacher and students, as Mr. Jordan just mentioned, we have some of the composites, composite measures that were pulled from, from that, the parent survey. Again, we can take the same approach in terms of looking at what are significant areas of concern drawn from that survey and focus on that. Of course, we have the board reports, tell us that from the district climate survey report. And then moving along down the list of identified needs, we have here highlighted that the board needs to determine parent engagement measures. And so, that's something that we've talked a lot about, about what is parent, what does parent engagement look like, how are we defining it? And I think that's something that we continually, we've talked about, but have we really determined what those measures are? And I think we still need to, need to get to that, incorporate in this plan. Before I get off of that, does anyone have anything to add?
And just also note, we talked earlier about the wraparound services, the partnerships, the collaboration, so just want to bring attention again that this was the area where we, where we put those items.
Right.
Ms. Doyle?
What I would suggest we might say is something along the lines of legislative priorities, is that we need to identify the legislative priorities and the success of achieving those priorities with support of X, Y and Z. So can I work with you on that language?
Yeah, we actually had it in there.
We had it in there.
You can blame him.
Yeah, you blame, we had it, we had it in there.
And I think that will be a, a much more in terms of the entire tone of the accountability plan.
Yes.
We know it's inadequate, but let's.
So I plead guilty.
That's okay.
And I'm teasing.
Ms. Bassin, Ms. Bassin had the positive language, and I said, if we put the positive language in there, we will ignore the reality. And.
Well, I, I, if, if we're just, no, I agree. If we're just trying to do surface work, we would, but I think we all know what it means in terms of priorities. But again, that one statement could cast a shadow on this entire document, and that becomes a focus rather than the fact, you know?
So I'd be happy to work with.
That's fine, yeah, we, we, yeah.
It'll be firm, but positive language.
I'm, I'm with that, but, you know, it's, it's so interesting, as a board, we will constantly have conversations around, you know, we need to. we need to talk to city council, we need to talk to the state, oh, we don't have the funding that we need, we need more resources. And this is actually a test, because I said, well, we'll stick it in here and then we'll see what we do. Will we figure out ways of dealing with some brutal facts or will we not? But I'm comfortable.
Right. Well, I think the way, see, that's just in the state...
You all responded the way that I thought you would respond.
No, but I got to wait a minute. I'm still on the jewelry box. I'm still, I got one more minute on this one. But I'm saying, I agree that we know support is not adequate. But when you look at the structure of everything else, that's a statement, that's not a need. So, what is the need that's associated from the support? Are we talking about policy support? Are we talking about fiscal support? Are we talking about legislative support? And so, that was my whole point about that, is that we need to identify, everything else is a need, that's a statement of fact. And everything else is presented as a need. So, what is it about support that we need to address? Or how do we define support so that then, when we can measure our progress with this, what will it look like? So, that's my testimony. Your honor?
Amen.
For Dr. Boone's position.
I know, it's okay, it's all right, I'm good.
But we can work to modify that.
I told Ms. Bassine we would have that discussion, so that's good.
We passed two tests, we read the whole document.
Yes, yes.
And we had recommendations.
So, as a gentleman told me the other day about, gee, we have boring meetings. And I said to him, I said, yeah, well, sometimes that's intentional, because we're not here to entertain, we're here to do work. And so, I appreciate the work that went into this. We will continue to refine it and come back. And ultimately, you know, just a reminder, our goal is not just to make sure that we've identified the needs, but our goal is to make sure from a board-level accountability perspective that we see what we're going to own from our role from a governance and then also what we hold accountable in terms of our role and our relationship to the administration. So, thank you for bearing with this exercise over the last two meetings. And it looks like after we get an opportunity to get those initial or additional feedback points from the administration that we can stay on our goal of having this done as we enter into September. So, as a checkpoint, it's 7:30. We haven't touched on any of our policy matters. What's the will of the board? I'm comfortable that we could likely touch on these in a workshop. I was hoping that we would get to the request for information piece. And maybe from a workshop perspective, we may want to prioritize that at our next meeting, in particular around, that really deals with the policies and practices around our freedom of information requests, what the role is of the foyer officer, how we respond, how we go about making determinations in terms of how we charge fees. What's the process where sometimes in the past, something may come forward requesting something of the board, the administration has it, they'll send it to legal review, legal will make a determination, but it's not often, I won't say often, it's not always the case, then what that recommendation is comes back to the board, and then the board affirms that this is going to be our position in terms of requests that we receive or costs that we may charge specifically to those things that are associated with the board. So, those are very important and then also just as part of our ongoing professional development around making sure that we're aware of our responsibilities and charges as it relates to requests for information. But it is 7:30. I know it's been a long day, would you all like to adjourn now? And we have agenda planning tomorrow, is that right? And we can work on prioritizing these things to get them into our August 17 meeting. Or is there anything that you see here that you'd like for us to address right now while we're here? Because I kind of feel the exhaustion. All right, so, lack of, well, silence means everybody's tired. So, why don't we adjourn? And we will send you all updates in terms of how we will factor this in for the upcoming meeting after we take into that for agenda planning. One final thing, though, on the agenda planning note, if there is anything that any of the board members feel that you are hoping we would get to that we haven't gotten to yet, if you can just send us a note this evening or in the morning so we can also make sure we bring that to the agenda planning, you know? Appreciate that, please do so. Robson, did you have something? Oh, Ms. Bassine?
Ms. Jordan, in terms of action steps for the accountability plan, do you intend to, or maybe you'll talk about this tomorrow, but I was going to ask the board members to, you know, take a look if you have any comments to let us know if you have any additions that you think need to be included. And I don't know if you're thinking that we will continue this discussion on the 17th or would you like to say target?
Yeah, we'll talk about it tomorrow. We definitely want to get continuous input. We need to be able to figure out if the 17th gives the administration time to respond to some of the items that we put on the agenda, but no later than the next work session. We will be prepared to deal with it.
Okay, I think that would be great in the next work.
But we just have to see it, because pretty soon, we're going to deal with school openings and a lot of other things, so, but we don't want to lose the momentum.
Right, that's why I was trying to see.
Okay, anyone else? All right, meeting adjourned.